Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see so many people in the audience tonight. Okay, let's take these glasses off. That over there, that goes here. I'm calling the July 16th meeting of the Altadena Town Council to order in honor of Veronica Jones. I will hit the gavel because we're so official here. The time is 7:04. I will turn it over to Councilmember you to introduce the pledge.
Matilda Pierce, a rising junior from Blair High School and an Altadena resident from 4602, placed first among 350 students in the National Sports Medicine Competition on May 31st of this year. The competition vigorously evaluated the students on their knowledge and skills of sports medicine and their aptitude in anatomy and physiology. Matilda had seven other teammates from Blair who placed in the top 25 in the competition. Their dedication and brilliance led to the school to place second as a team in the national standings. This fall, Matilda will be a junior at Blair High School, and she aspires to pursue a career in medicine. She is in the National Honor Society Sports Medicine Club and Track and Field Team at Blair. Matilda enjoys rock climbing, mountain biking, and hiking, having just completed a week-long backpacking trip at the Olympic National Park in Washington State. The Altadena Town Council wants to acknowledge and congratulate Matilda Pierce on her outstanding achievement, and we are honored to have her here tonight to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Can everybody please stand? Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Matilda, stay there. And Dr. McGinnis, Dr. McGinnis, who's the principal of Blair High School and Middle School, is here. So come up too, so we can get a nice photo of everybody together.
So can I have your new town council also look at your certificate? Congratulations on amazing achievements.
Let's get it over there.
Um, let's see what we got. The curtain's really nice right there.
Okay, here.
Just know Reggie. Thank you. Can you all move over just a little bit? Beautiful, one, two, three, and congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to roll calls. Councilmember Sutherland.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Listen up closely and answer when I hear. I'm sorry, I was just noticing that we were missing a couple more people than I thought. So please answer when you hear your name. Connor Sapola.
Present.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Nick Arndson.
Present.
Kim Yu.
Present.
Melissa Marona.
Present.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
John Carmody.
Here.
Whoops. Chris O'Malley is excused. Isis Molden.
Present.
Japhina Hall.
Present.
By Stuart Gordon.
Present.
Thank you. Pat Sutherland's here. Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Doug Cauliflow is excused.
I do want to wish Doug and his wife a very happy 30th anniversary.
Diane Marcusson.
Not sure where Diane is.
I'm sorry?
Not sure where she is. I just texted her though.
And Sylvia Vega.
She is parking and on her way in.
Okay. Thank you, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, Vice Chair Arndson.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, fellow council and community members. The agendas are in the back of the room as well as public comment cards. I should note, the comment cards that are in the back of the room do not have a spot where you can put your contact info, but that's important to us, and I'll explain why in a moment here. The council welcomes input from the community on both agendized and non-agendized items. If you would like to make public comment, please fill out one of those cards and give it to Reggie on this side of the tables. Additionally, I want to remind everyone in the room to please silence your cellphones and other noise-making devices. While the council does not respond to public comment during the meeting, if you would like a response, please do include that contact information. Since there's no space for it, put it anywhere in the notes there. Public comments are limited to two minutes. These guidelines are in place to ensure that everyone wishing to make public comment has the time to do so that we can conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion. Councilmembers, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, July 9th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda was circulated to you on Friday, the 12th. I have the following changes, if you can please make note. Under Section 2, Officers' Reports, you can remove the Treasurer's Report. As I speak of that removal, I don't want to forget the can, so I'm going to do that now. This very beautiful antique can, back from the olden days when the council first started, is our way of being able to. We're a complete volunteer organization up here, so everyone at this table with me is giving their time and energy because they love this community, and I know you love the community too. You're here tonight. Please drop something in the can to help us continue and spread that love. I'm going to continue with corrections or changes to our agenda. Under Section 3, Public Safety Reports, we are happily honoring a one-time request from our amazing Maria Greiken, and we are moving FIRE to 3.1, which shifts Sheriff to 3.2, CHP to 3.3. CERT will remain the same. Are there any additional modifications tonight from my fellow council? Dorothy?
Yes, could we add a Census Track report for 4603.01?
Yes, we can. I'll make that 8.2, will be 4603.01. Any others? Seeing none, I move the agenda be approved with said changes.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda in a second. All in favor? Any abstentions? Any noes? The motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay. I have some good news for everyone that's assembled here tonight. Since 1984, July has been National Ice Cream Month, with National Ice Cream Day celebrated on the 3rd Sunday of July, which would make it this Sunday. Therefore, in honor of the 40th anniversary of Ice Cream Month, please enjoy an ice cream novelty from our interns in the back who will come forward and pass them out. There are ice cream sandwiches, drumsticks, and the vanilla-dipped. I don't know what those are called, sundaes? I don't know what they call them, whatever, those. So please enjoy an ice cream. I'm going to move my comments a little bit. We're waiting for Sylvia, so I'm going to move down a little bit. While it's hard to believe, given our two recent special elections, it is the time when we begin planning our regular election in November. I wanted to thank Councilmember Sutherland for stepping up to chair the Town Council's Election Committee. So she will be appointed as Chair effective immediately, and will appreciate any help from anyone here that is not seeking reelection in November. I'm going to go ahead and make the next appointment even though she's not here. While it was my great pleasure to serve as the Chair of the Town Council's Education Committee for two years, it is time to entrust the committee to a new steward. I appoint Councilmember Vega as Chair of the Education Committee. The 2024-2025 school year for PUSD will start on August 19th. Some of the schools that serve Altadena students have new principals, and there is a race for the school board seat in District 2. I look forward to the next chapter of this committee and invite others on this dais to serve with Sylvia, who's walking in right now, the new Chair of the Education Committee, thanking both Sylvia and Pat for stepping into these roles. And, given the excitement of last month's Little League recognition, and even though June is Pride Month, I neglected to announce that Councilmember Arndson was appointed by Supervisor Barger to serve on LA County's LGBTQ+ Commission. Thank you, Nick, for serving us proudly. And finally, and I hope you will indulge me, this one last announcement. After nearly eight years of exemplary service, the council bids a grateful farewell to Dominic Corey, District Representative to Senator Portantino. Dominic, we thank you for your dutiful service and partnership, and, on a personal note, I thank you for your friendship. We look forward to future collaborations as you step into your new role as Director of Community Outreach for the Rose Bowl. We have a little something for you, so Nick, if you would do him the. Watch it. Nick, Nick, Nick. Oh, she's got it there. Dominic is really here to, thinks he's here to introduce his successor, but we wanted to thank him for his service.
So I wasn't expecting that, but thank you, Altadena Town Council. It has truly been an honor to serve with you and this community the last eight years with Senator Portantino's office. And like the Chair said, I have moved over to the Rose Bowl, and I hope, and I know I will be a good community partner because I know that Altadena has, a lot of the times, been forgotten with the Rose Bowl, and I hope to bring a connection and build that relationship between Altadena and the Rose Bowl. So moving forward, I will work with Victoria and the council to do something at the Rose Bowl that's just strictly for Altadena. I can promise you that we will be a good community partner, not only within Pasadena but Altadena as well, because we are one Dina, we are one community. And with me leaving Senator Portantino's office, I leave you guys in good hands. So I would like to introduce my coworker Lisa, who I'm sure a lot of you guys have met. She is amazing. She lives right down the street in Pasadena, knows Altadena very well, and you guys are in hands for the next six months. And I can also guarantee you and push whoever comes in after, in the next Senate race, we will push for Altadena to be well-represented in the community because Senator Portantino has set the bar high, and we want to keep that going. So here is Lisa. Thank you, Altadena Town Council.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Brought, as Dominic said, and I am. He has very big shoes to fill. But I want to make sure that you all know that I am here to support you. I've put my card on, I think, at everybody's spot. If you need me, please reach out to me. I was an Altadena resident for 10 years and then just moved down the street to Pasadena for the last 20 years. So, but we do a lot of our business in, it's still in Altadena. We started relationships there, and we continue with those. And so I really, I look forward to working from my hometown. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, and welcome. Okay, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to just cut mine short too. I just want to make note that those interns serving you ice cream are finishing up their internship. We won't see them at next month's meeting, so I just want to take a nod to thank Graham and Jared for their great work and their oversight, providing us some input from a younger perspective. It's much appreciated, and we're going to continue that tradition moving forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our corresponding secretary, Councilmember Wong. No Treasury, we struck it. Chris is not here.
Hi, everyone. So, corresponding secretary, this is an exciting time called summer for many reasons. I know we spent a lot of time actually doing a lot of communication regarding the closure of the Cheney Trail Gate during the 4th of July extravaganza, so that was some good communication work. So coming up, we still have a lot left in July, and we will be rolling into August. So highlighting, of course, the Concerts in the Park have started. How many of you know about the Concerts in the Park? Everyone? Yes. So anyway, on our Town Council website, under Calendar, you can find that. As well, if you would like to post anything, you can reach out to me at Dorothy, D-O-R-O-T-H-Y.Wong, at Altadinatowncouncil.org. And also, the library has AltadinaNews.org. You can list your events there. Highlighting again, let's see, we're at the Town Council meeting on 7/18, July 18th. LA County West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan Public Meeting is on the list. And Altadena Safe Streets Committee on the 24th, and lots of other great stuff you're going to hear about. And onward we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. First up in our public safety. Whoopsie, so sorry, what did I forget? Oh, Minutes. Where was that on here? Oh, I missed, oh, you know why? Because I crossed out Treasury and it went over. Please do the Minutes, Councilmember Sutherland.
Councilmembers, over the weekend, you received the Minutes for the June 18th meeting. Since then, I received a small clarification from Councilmember Arndson, which I have made. Otherwise, there were no other additions or corrections. Is, are there any that you may have thought of since then? In that case, I move that we accept the Minutes as amended.
Great, all in favor? There are, should be at least. Are there any abstentions?
No.
Yes, I was not present.
You were not here? Okay. And I believe that Councilmember Molden joined the meeting late, so probably should abstain.
Okay.
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 Also, Councilmember Marcusson will not be here tonight.
Yes, I know that.
Okay. All right, now can I move? Did I forget anything else? I didn't. Okay. We're going to move on to our public safety reports. And as Councilmember Arndson said earlier, we are going to start tonight with Maria Greiken from LA County Fire.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The statistics or the fire responses for the month of June in Altadena, we responded to a total of 383 calls for service. 294 of those were for medical issues, and of that, we transported 217 patients to the hospital. We had six fires during the month. Two of them were, three of them were trash fires. One was a vehicle fire on Monterrosa Drive. One was a cooking fire, so it was food on the stove, and it spread a little bit and burned the cabinets in the kitchen, but that was the extent of the damage, which is good. And then we had a fire on Porter Avenue on June 14th. It was a small contents fire in the basement, and the cause of that fire is currently under investigation. There were six traffic collisions that we responded to. None of them, as from, that we responded to, none of them were versus pedestrians, and none of them were into structures or persons trapped or anything. So it was just six straight traffic collisions that we responded to. And our safety tip of the month is, it's hot out there. Would you all agree? Yeah. So please exercise caution when you are outdoors. When you're doing your exercising, pace yourself. Please don't exercise and exert yourself in this incredible heat. And remember to stay hydrated. It is so important that you drink a lot of water, wear some loose-fitting clothing, light-colored, lightweight. Wear sunscreen if you're outside. And then, again, just make sure you're resting if you are exercising, that you rest appropriately. And that is all I have, unless there's any questions.
Any questions from council? Wow, we did that in record time.
Thank you, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
So appreciated.
I know you're heading.
And Nick, I didn't forget. I'm late, but I didn't forget. He requested these when I was out on vacation, and I was trying to get them to you otherwise.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to our Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Williams.
Good evening. So I'll start with the crime stats for up-to-date. Our violent crimes are down 33%, so that's a good thing. They've been on a downtrend for quite some time. Our aggravated assaults that are not domestic violence have increased slightly. We went from like six events to about eight. Property crime is down overall 5%. And we're seeing a nice decrease in residential burgs, so that's a good thing. I know last month, I talked about the GTAs. I believe they were up 70% last month. And so we're seeing a nice decrease in the GTAs. So as of right now, this month, there were zero incidents, so hopefully we'll keep it that way, you know? And then, other than that, our property crimes overall tend, seems to be trending down. So the community's doing a great job of getting that message out to the neighbors and protecting their property. If we keep that up and also help increase the Neighborhood Watch, I believe that will help bring those issues and incidents down. I will like to talk about the Health Department and the operations that they've conducted last week with the food vendors. They came out and did consecutive enforcement and did an excellent job. They were able to confiscate over 4,300 pounds of food and contacted 16 vendors during that time. That's, that's very good. That's a lot of food. However, I will say it is a small dent, and we still have to continue to keep that enforcement up. We are going to continue it for some time. They are limited with their resources. They're spread very thin and very wide, but we really appreciate what they did here in Altadena during that, that time. So thank you. Last week, we had a Business Watch event. It was a very good event. Business owners, people from the community, they came in, and it was a great gathering and sharing of ideals to help with public safety and businesses. So we hope to continue that with collaboration with Altadena Chamber of Commerce. As a matter of fact, based off of that, that meeting, I had a meeting just today with the owners of Mountain View Cemetery. And just sitting down, talking with them, we came up with some ideas or strategies to help with some of the issues that they were having in their area, and also come up with ideas of community engagement. So just from that meeting, we were able to expand and continue what we, what I'm trying to say, this grand view of what we can become, you know? Couple of events I want to talk about, well, actually just one event that's coming up pretty soon, next month, National Night Out, that's August 6th. It's going to be that Tuesday between 5:00 and 7:00 at Farnsworth Park. Every year, we have this event, and it's very nice. Families can come out. We should have some food and snacks. Good information, so please join us on August 6th for that event. And two things I'd like to talk about. Sheriff's Department is really pushing our online reporting system. It's called SORTS, Sheriff's Online Report Tracking System. And these are things that you can file reports instead of having deputies come out to your house or coming to the station for certain events. We just urge people to go online, L A S D dot org, and find the SORTS button, and you can read all about it. There's certainly reports that qualify anything that doesn't have any, what we call workable evidence, or minor issues like stolen trash cans, missing cell phones, stolen cell phones, things of that nature. And it's just to help kind of relieve some of the time that deputies go out to handle certain calls. Certain things can be handled online, so. And they're hoping to expand what can be done online also, so just keep that in mind. And that's all I have for today. One last thing, parking. We're having an issue with our parking in Altadena. It's been an issue for a while, but just bear with us. Our parking enforcement plans to expand, and we will be dealing with that issue very soon. That's all I have for today.
Any questions for Captain Williams? Go ahead.
Hey, Captain Williams. Regarding the vendors where the food was confiscated, is there like specific areas that those vendors were affected that were where they were, the food was taken away?
Yes, we targeted four areas. Those areas were on Lincoln, just south of Figueroa. Then there's Altadena and Washington, Woodbury, and Fair Oaks. And one more other area I can't think of right now, but those are the four areas we targeted. And they came out and did enforcement. We just monitored to make sure they were safe, and they did an excellent job.
I was going to say that I was headed back across town going east on Woodbury, and I came upon the taco vendor that's there in front of the Arco Station, or whatever station that is. And I saw the whole thing. You were there, Public Health was there, the whole thing sort of went down. I walked toward it, and someone was walking back, and he was very gruff and very angry that he didn't get his tacos. But anyway.
I would like to say, I urge people to just take caution with buying food from these vendors. There's a reason why the Health Department is involved. It's, it's, it's not safe to eat, you know?
One quick question. What's going on with the catalytic converters? Haven't heard much about that lately.
Yeah, me neither. That's a good thing.
That's all I want to hear, then.
Yeah. It's, yeah, I haven't heard anything. I'm not going to say too much. I don't like to jinx things. But things like that, they're, they're on the decline, so. We do plan on having a catalytic converter etching event. The person that specializes in that at the station, he's trying to figure out the logistics about it, but it should be coming soon, so.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Hi. I just wanted to ask, I know there's been some confusion with the street sweeping signs and enforcement of that, where cars are parked, and even just knowledge of the street sweeping. So have you guys been actually more, been more proactive with the street sweeping signs, or?
With the signs? Well, with the enforcement, we're trying to be more proactive with it, yes. So, like I said, our parking enforcement, they are spread a little thin for right now. It's very difficult for them to cover the entire area of Altadena at this moment. We expect very soon that that's going to be remedied, but at the most part, they're, they're hitting the spots that are most vital. When we get complaints, we try to attack those areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to let the community know that next month, we will get an update on the sidewalk vending ordinance at this meeting. So we'll have someone, the Public Health Deputy, hopefully, to talk a little bit about what that's going to look like going forward.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Just one thing. I had a trespasser in my backyard for several days in a row, contacted the sheriffs. They were out there almost immediately and got ahold of the trespasser, spoke to him, and were incredibly professional and called me back to discuss exactly what had happened. So I just want to thank you and your staff for all the good work that you do.
Great, it all worked out, right?
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
CERT, Deb Hopperstot?
CHP. I should just leave. I'll just, I'll just excuse myself.
I see Officer Bay.
You can see me a mile away. All right, good.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Officer Brian Bay with the California Highway Patrol. I'll be presenting the CHP statistics for June of this year. So the California Highway Patrol investigated a total of nineteen traffic crashes in the unincorporated area of Altadena. Ten of those were just property damage only, no injuries. Uh, four of those were DUI investigated and arrested. Uh, three of those were hit and run and then two were injury-related. I do want to bring up some statistics for our maximum enforcement period that we, um, had during the Fourth of July holiday. So just in the Altadena area alone, the CHP Altadena Office issued a total of, uh, five hundred and ninety-seven citations with around two hundred verbal warnings. So we do give out verbal warnings too. However, uh, two hundred and forty-two of those were for speed under a hundred. Eleven were for speed over a hundred. Uh, two were arrested for twenty-three, one, uh, sorry, sorry, that's my, my jargon there, for reckless driving. And then forty-four for seatbelt violations. Uh, we also investigated twenty-four DUIs and we did not have any fatal crashes during that period. I do want to say that the, uh, just also on that, the CHP statewide issued over thirty-two thousand citations statewide. So we were out there making sure that everyone got home safely. Uh, my safety tip is, um, what I've been seeing on, on the highways and freeways is just to kind of check underneath your hood. A lot of things happen, especially with this heat. Uh, things tend, tend to deteriorate. Radiator, radiator fluid tends to just kind of leak somewhere and then you find yourself on the side of, on the freeway, hopefully with one of us helping you. Um, but so just please schedule regular maintenance, kind of make sure everything is working properly so that you can get to where you're going safely. Hopefully with some air conditioning too. Uh, we will be here at, uh, July twenty-sixth. I shouldn't say here physically, but we'll be at Parks After Dark for Bicycle Safety, Bicycle Safety Rodeo. Uh, myself, I believe Officer Keller and Officer Phillips will be there to do Bicycle Rodeo, so that should be fun. And, uh, August fourth, we'll be at the Assembly Member Holden Fair. So we look forward to seeing the public out there. And, uh, try to be brief this evening, but that concludes my safety report. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Do you know how those numbers for the Fourth of July compared to other years?
Oh, year-over-year?
Yeah.
I just pulled up the, the most recent. What I can do is our next meeting, I can kind of provide that, or I can provide that offline too. I know that we've been stepping up our enforcement. Our, our commissioner is very big on Inview Patrol, so you see our black and whites a lot more as well as, um, lowering the mileage to death rate, which is, um, something that we're very, very adamant about, so. I, I know from just hearing around the office that it's been, it's a higher number of citations given out this year than, than prior years. And fatalities have been down. But I don't have the, the data to back that up unfortunately.
I'll take your word for it.
Thank you.
Um, and then I just wanted to make sure, I wasn't sure if you were here at the time, but Sylvia Vega is now the Chair of the Education Committee.
Okay.
And POSD returns to school on August nineteenth.
Nineteenth, yes, that Monday.
So I'm sure she will be in touch with you about that.
Sounds good. Yeah, we look forward to that. I know summer school is, uh, winding down here pretty soon, so.
Yeah, that first, you know, two weeks of the school returning is really.
Yeah, you'll be seeing myself and Officer Keller definitely on Calaveras and, and Lake Avenue around our hotspots, but also other areas too. Just to reinforce our good, um, traffic safety.
Go ahead.
Uh, speaking, speaking of speed, uh, the speed trailer.
Yes.
Thank you. The speed trailer, uh, we did have another sort of broadside out of control collision on Lincoln.
Okay.
Uh, where the residents, uh, have been very concerned in the census tracks forty-six-ten, forty-six-oh-three, oh-two. And, uh, you have put the trailer in forty-six-oh-three-oh-one. So I think that might be a request, council members.
Okay, is that Lincoln, uh, south of Altadena Drive? Okay, right down there. By, by the fire station?
Yeah, Harriet's, uh, and then that, the collision that just occurred, uh, was at Mendocino and Lincoln.
Okay.
And the driver was coming southbound. This is just the word on the street from the residents, but it actually hit a car in the northbound direction. Trying to avoid hitting a car that was coming out from one of the side streets and the residents were talking about blind, blind spots and, and it actually pushed the car that was parked into a tree, so it looked like that car had crashed. But it really was pushed, uh, by this driver that was coming downhill, so.
Speed was probably a factor with that, if there's all that physics involved, yes. So I, I understand that. Uh, we actually received a new, a brand-new radar speed trailer. Um, however, we are, um, in the midst of deploying it. We still have our other trailers at our disposal. So we have to kind of get that deployed out to the field, so to speak, but since there's new sensors, new all this other stuff, we have to, uh, make sure that everything is deployed properly because once we get something, it's hard to get it again, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. So lovely to see you. Thank you so much. Happy summer.
Happy summer. I know it's, it's, it's warm out there, so.
It's going to be warmer this weekend for sure.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Now we have CERT, I believe. Am I right about that? Yes, I am. Deb Halberstadt, come on up.
Everybody says they hate. Good evening, Council. I'm glad to be here. Hi, everybody. All my friends. So fun, okay. Our second quarter meeting for CERT was held last Wednesday here at the ACC, July tenth. We talked about wildfires and the heat. We discussed Catherine Barker's newsletter item about preventing wildfires. There is a new app for wildfires called Watch Duty. Might want to look into it. It's quite good. Uh, we talked about jackery, solar power batteries, and forming telephone tree, a telephone tree in case of a wildfire in Altadena. I'm probably going to need all of your help to do that. If we form a tree, I'm going to have to speak to all the council people to figure that out, how to do that. Also, the use of last-minute air horns for emergency evacuations in certain areas, like the Meadows, were discussed. Pasadena Glen has put air horns, because there are another place, it's just one, one-way passage. They've, they've put them different places and there are certain council members there, I mean, Neighborhood Watch people, that, um, have to go and get the air horns and use them. That's the last, kind of the last minute thing to evacuate people. It's a really good idea because air horns, you know, can be heard everywhere and they're so annoying. So the Meadows would be a good place, but if you feel like you need them in your neighborhoods, you might think about that. Our third quarter CERT meeting will be the second Wednesday in October, October ninth at five-thirty here at the ACC. I'd, I'd like your help in asking your interested constituents to contact me for CERT. HalfCityProdz@gmail.com is my email. We had kind of a reluctance to join Community Affairs, as you well know, after COVID. But it seems like it's starting to grow again, so I'd like to look for new CERT members. In other items, the Red Cross Blood Drive will be Monday, September ninth here at the ACC. Sponsored by the LSAD, L A S D, I think I could say that. I'll be gone. Another Red Crosser will be in charge. I'm going to write to all the known groups like Altadena Rotary, Library, Altadena Pride to help me tell everyone about the Blood Drive. Also, if you could reach out to your constituents and tell them about the Blood Drive, it would help us meet our quotas. Blood supplies in the United States are a record twenty-year low, according to the Red Cross. Young people need to understand they need to give blood. We have a real lack of people between, say, eighteen and thirty. They are not coming to give blood. So, you know, it's kind of, we need to push a little and tell them it's a good thing to do. There will be a Sound the Alarm event on Saturday, uh, October twenty-sixth at grocery, at the grocery outlet parking lot. That will serve as our headquarters for the distribution of personnel and smoke alarms. Please have your constituents who need smoke alarms to use this URL. It's also on the flyer I just gave you. W W W dot redcross dot org forward slash L A home fire to sign up. And please, please pass out the fires. If you need to make copies, um, I do have a color copy. I could, I could send that color copy to you if you email me and I'll send you the color one. I only have a black and white printer. Could be that I'm cheap. I don't know. Any questions?
Yes. What time is the Blood Drive and are appointments suggested?
Yes, so appointments are suggested and they'll be taking blood between eight AM and three PM. And if you, if you go to that site for the Red Cross, you will, you will see the appointment schedule. They'll give it to you. Put in nine-one-zero-zero-one and it'll pop up as to the date and you can sign in. It's fairly easy. Um, the date for the Blood Drive is.
Nine-nine?
Yes, September ninth, thank you.
Okay. And then Councilmember Barnes in?
I'm looking at the smoke alarms. I'm assuming there's an assessment made and then there's a number for different size homes. They do more than one alarm?
Hmm. I think the most John's put in was nine in one, one gigantic house.
All right, thank you.
So, uh, it's just a question of, I mean, there's so many different sizes houses, you know? And some people never test their alarms and they never change their batteries. Any other? So we tell everybody that too. That's all right, John. That's okay. He doesn't understand that we're recording this.
That's okay.
Thank you. You mentioned that the alarms have a ten-year battery and they make sure to let everybody know that. That's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega?
Deb, can you please repeat the name of the app that you mentioned in the beginning of your report?
Yes, the newest wildfire app that I know of is called Watch Duty. Watch Duty, one word. And what's interesting about it is people, regular people like all of us are reporting into Watch Duty on their computers, a lot of ham radio operators too. So we're getting a really much bigger and better sense now of where the wildfires are starting and how fast, because there's so many more citizens looking for them and reporting them, not just only, uh, fire agencies.
Any other questions for Deb? Okay, thank you so much. Great information, Deb. Appreciate it. And thank you so much for taking the council pictures tonight. Thank you. Okay, I think that means we can move on to our special presentations. And first up, we have the State Water Tour Recap. Gary Bryant and Nina, are you both here? Yep. Okay, come up and Councilmember Wong will manage your presentation.
Good evening, members of the Town Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the May twenty-twenty-four Metropolitan Water District three-day inspection tour of the state water program. We did this with the Foothill Municipal and Upper San Gabriel Valley Water Districts collaborating together on this tour. Dorothy Wong and Nick, uh, from the Town Council joined thirty-seven members of the tour comprised of other elected officials from, uh, the various cities, Arcadia, City of Bradbury. We started off with a flight from Burbank Airport to Sacramento. Uh, and then we boarded a bus with various stops along the way, including the Oroville Dam Reservoir, Bay Delta, and a proposed site reservoir. And there were other stops along the way for this three-day tour. The intent was to familiarize leaders, uh, in the community, the monumental task of providing water to the nineteen million residents of Southern California. I, just a fast comment, um, on the way back, we asked many of the members who attended, what was their takeaway? And the theme that seemed to emerge was, we had no idea how much it took to get water from the northern part of the state to the southern part. Foothill's manager is Nina Jasmedarian, who you have heard before. I'm the Foothill representative to the Metropolitan Water Board. So Nina's going to provide some additional information in slides. One final comment. We are preparing another tour in the fall that will be, um, starting at Hoover Dam. Uh, we'll fly into Vegas, uh, and then we will do the Colorado River Aqueduct. And I would encourage you all to consider attending because, um, that's a very good tour as well. So Nina.
So, uh, I'm going to go through some slides so you can see this, uh, better. Um, the concept doesn't work really just without the pictures. So this is, um, basically the Metropolitan Water District Service Area out from Ventura County all the way down to San Diego. And, uh, the red circle up there, that's where we are right now. So if you can move on. And here is the Foothill Municipal Water District Service Area and we go from Altadena, Kinnalua Mesa, La Cañada and La Crescenta. And we have, we're cover about twenty-two square miles. We purchase water from Metropolitan. We have a connection with Metropolitan down at the Rose Bowl. And we have a pump station down there and that's where we pump from down there up into our service area. Um, we have about eighty thousand customers altogether, but Foothill is a wholesaler, so we're actually selling water to retail agencies. And if you flip to the next slide, you'll see the retail agencies. And right there, we, in Altadena, there's Lincoln, Las Flores, Rubio, Pasadena Cemetery is not our retail agency. It's, uh, it's just there as an identifier. And Pasadena also serves, um, the Altadena area as well. And then there's also Kinnalua Irrigation District on the right. So about forty-five percent of the supplies in the whole service area are, is groundwater with a little bit of surface water. The groundwater here is the Raymond Basin, uh, with La Crescenta, it's the Verdugo Basin. You'll find that, um, some of the retail agencies have zero percent ground, groundwater. Some of them are a hundred percent groundwater. And Rubio and Lincoln Avenue are mostly groundwater at this point. Uh, Kinnalua is a hundred percent groundwater. Las Flores is more of a mist, mix. Okay, next slide. There's also surface water. I know we've got Brown Mountain Dam and we don't really get water from there. But, uh, it was the best picture I could find of this area. So we've got tunnels, um, and that we actually, uh, the retail agencies are actually able to capture water through the foothills and put it into their distribution system. Next slide. Okay, so Metropolitan is who we purchase our water from. That's where the State Water Project trip was. And there's two, um, two, uh, sources of water for Metropolitan, the State Water Project and the Colorado River Aqueduct. So the State Water Project is on the left side. It starts from the Feather River watershed, goes down into Lake Oroville. That water is collected there. From Lake Oroville, it's released, goes through the Delta without any, um, physical distribution system other than the Delta. And then it gets pumped in the California Aqueduct. And it's basically four hundred and forty-four miles of California Aqueduct to get the water down here to Southern California. And there's two sides, the east branch and the west branch of the California Aqueduct. We get most of our water from the east branch. There's also, um, and it's not shown on, it's on the right side. You'll see the, the. You'll see the Los Angeles Aqueduct. That water only goes to the city of Los Angeles. No one else can, has access to that water. And there's also the Colorado River Aqueduct, which Metropolitan owns and operates. That's about 240 miles of aqueduct. And, um, there's pump stations in there as well. And that's coming from, um, Lake Havasu. Okay, so where we get our water from, um, when we get our water, it's all treated water and Metropolitan treats that water for, for us. So, it's from the Weymouth Plant out in the Laverne. And they make sure that it's high-quality, reliable supply. And there's thousands of tests every year to ensure that that occurs. So, um, so, as Director Bryant mentioned, we started our day, uh, flying from Burbank up to Sacramento, got on a bus and ended up at Oroville Dam. That was our first place. And you'll see that on the left, you see them releasing water. They were actually releasing water that day. That's from that day, that picture. And, uh, the dam was actually very full, the reservoir is actually very full that day. And, um, uh, the reservoir is actually capable of holding 3.5 million acre feet. So, let me give you a perspective of what an acre foot is. An acre foot is basically a football field, one foot deep. So, think of three and a half million of those stacked on top of each other. And that's Lake Oroville for you. So, um, and if you'll remember, I think this was back in 2018, there was a dam failure. This is the dam that failed. And there was an evacuation of almost 200,000 people. They had to lower the water levels and then the people were able to go back home. Took a lot of time to make those repairs. They repaired it and now it's in, um, position that we, it's, uh, can be filled to capacity again. We also went to, if you can go back, to sites, the Sites Reservoir Project area. So, this is a new off-stream, uh, storage that is being proposed. It would be 1.8 million acre feet. And we were right down there in that valley. So, if that valley was full of water, um, there would be about 300 feet of water on top of us when we were down there. It was very interesting to see. So, they're moving forward with that project at this point. And then we went to the Delta Cross Channel Gates. The day two started, we actually sat and listened to presentations for a couple of hours, had a nice breakfast, and then we went to the Delta Cross Channel Gates. These gates, um, when they're open, allow for fresh water from the Sacramento River to go into the Delta, which helps with the salinity of the Delta being not, uh, saline. And so, we can actually get water that's, uh, very fresh into the Cal, uh, California Aqueduct. There's a picture of us on the left over there. Now, when the gates are closed, it actually helps the salmon, because what happens is the salmon end up going into some of the tributaries in the Delta. They get, um, isolated in there and then they will die off. So, it helps them actually move up the river, uh, better, up the Delta and into the rivers better. Okay. The other thing we did was we went to Big Break Visitor Center, which was very interesting. And in this picture on the right, you see people walk, uh, standing on something. That's actually a map of the Delta and it was very interesting, the way it's shaped and tilted. If you start pouring water from the top, it starts moving the way the Delta water flows. So, it's a very interesting to be able to see that picture, how that water's flowing in the Delta. We then ended up at, uh, San Luis Reservoir, which is on the other side of the Delta. And, uh, got to walk around there, uh, and see, uh, the site there. And, uh, that ended up being our, uh, last tour, uh, stop on, on the second day. Then the third day, we went to Del Bos Farms. And, um, the farming community is really working hard to try to save water. And this is what we were learning there at Del Bos Farms, what they're doing. Uh, he grows almonds and cherries, melons, other things. That picture in the middle is basically what they use to irrigate. And, um, it's a long tube, they can use it one year and then it breaks down. And there's holes in there and basically that's what they're doing, uh, putting water to the roots through those holes that they make and, uh, saving water that way. It's a form of drip irrigation, really. And, uh, then we drove all the way back down to, uh, our offices. And so, we flew, but then we had to drive all the way back down in a bus. So, it was, it was a good, good trip. Any questions we can answer? Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for including the council in the invitation for this very informative tour. I heard from both Dorothy and from Nick. Um, I think that things like this are very important to Californians in particular. Um, we have a tendency to believe that once our, our reservoirs are full, we don't have to conserve. Um, and we all know that as the climate continues to change and as we have drier and drier periods, that we will go into another state of drought, um, soon enough. So, I appreciate that and I appreciate the invitation for the upcoming trip. Um, and I think that there will be other council members that will avail themselves of that, I hope. So, thank you so much for being here, we appreciate you so much. Okay. Now, we're going to hear from, um, as many people know, Charles White Park will be going through development. It'll be improved in many, many ways. And the, um, architect that is working with the county on that is here to present the plans for the park as they currently stand. So, Alan Compton, are you here? There you are. Oh, that was, that was the Alan. Okay, come up, come up. So, I will, we've got a presentation, right Dorothy? Okay, so thank you so much for being here.
Do you want to hand this out? Okay, great. We've got a few handouts of the presentation for the town council to have. And then also... And we have a, a board that shows the overall plan and we'll make that available, of course, for everybody to see afterwards. So, uh, council members, thank you so much for inviting us to come today to present, um, the plans as they are currently, um, envisioned. And, uh, so I'm excited to be here to walk through that with you today. So, um, should we go to the next slide? So, just to give you a quick, uh, overview, you know, we, as an office, really like to start with an idea when we work on parks and other projects. And so, Altadena is such an amazing community that really sits at the intersection of the city and the mountains. And so, we really have taken that, um, as our guidepost. So, we like to think about this park as where nature meets the city. So, I know this is maybe a little hard to see and we're gonna take a moment, uh, this evening to go over all of it. And again, of course, this enlargement will be available for, uh, you to view afterwards. But I just want to speak, uh, at a high level. So, the project, um, includes a lot of, uh, uh, enhancements really all around the edges of the park. The central area is not going to be touched at this time. So, we're gonna talk about all of these different sort of zones, um, as we work our way around. And we'll start, we'll work sort of, uh, counterclockwise. We'll end up starting in the northwest corner, move to the southwest, southeast, and end up in the, uh, I'm sorry, in the northeast, uh, corner. But, uh, let's go to the next slide and talk a little bit about the different kinds of changes that are gonna be coming to the park. Oops. Let me go back one. Oh, is this it? Okay. Forward one, right? Uh, no, go forward one, you were correct. Okay, great, there we go. So, um, I know this is difficult again to, to read, um, but the color coding is talking about several different, uh, areas that the, are, are gonna be enhanced. On the, on the right, uh, the yellow represents the playground, which has just recently been open. So, we're excited to see that improvement. Um, we've seen a lot of kids out there. Um, it's a really beautiful, uh, enhancement to the park. As we, uh, move around, uh, counterclockwise to the north, we're gonna talk about, um, some terrace seating and a pickleball area. Um, we're gonna be bringing in, um, some, uh, exercise equipment. On the left, there's gonna be a demonstration garden, an outdoor classroom. And there's gonna be a park office and rec, uh, uh, multipurpose room that will be available to the community, um, coming on around, some more exercise equipment. And then a demonstration garden area with water retention and picnic areas. And then continuing, uh, the cycle, there'll be a nice new enhanced, uh, entry marker. And then some shade over some of the existing, um, exercise equipment that's there. Okay. So, this diagram, we wanted to talk about some of the enhancements that we're bringing to the circulation and pathways. So, it's, uh, maybe a little difficult to see, but the, where you see yellow on here is the existing, uh, pathways that are there. And so, we're going to bring in some new walkways, um, and several ADA pathways. So, the yellow represents the existing. The red is also gonna be used for maintenance circuit, uh, pathways. So, those, uh, pathways will be wider. The green, uh, lines indicate every area where it will be ADA accessible. So, we're really making an effort to make sure that this park is accessible to everybody. And then there will be a couple of, um, decom, uh, be a decomposed granite pathway on the right, um, around the backside of the playground, um, also. So, plenty of ways to come into the park, um, and we'll have a couple of enhanced entries there. So, talking a little bit about water earlier, um, this is a slide that tells a little bit about some of the water strategies that are gonna take place, um, in the park. The central area where the playground, where the soccer field is now and the sort of open field is going to be a future stormwater project. So, in the enhancements that we're talking about today, we're not gonna be talking about any disturbances in there. A little later, there will be, um, some stormwater work that will happen, um, at a later time and, uh, we'll get a chance to come back and talk about that when that gets going. But again, around the edges, we're going to be collecting water through permeable paving, through some swales and through some retention areas. Oh, it's fussy, isn't it? Right, okay. There we go, alright, we're back. So, these blue areas you see in the bottom are gonna be detention areas because water is moving from the north side of the park down across the slope. We're gonna be catching that and infiltrating it in some catchment areas. Alright, so to talk about some of the areas and enlargement, again, here we are in the northwest corner. There is, uh, there is an outdoor classroom area. And then there will be a, a multipurpose, uh, room. There will be office, offices for the park as well. Okay, great. And then, uh, we are gonna have a swale that runs through this. So, when we're, when there's a rain event, there'll be an opportunity to collect the water and, and direct it into a retention basin. And as I mentioned in the lower left, there is a, um, multipurpose building that will be, uh, both a park office and also some times available to the, to the community. And then, uh, a quick rendering, so again, uh, an outdoor classroom area with amphitheater seating, so events for student classes. It could be performances, places for kids to play. So, we really see this as a, a very flexible space for the community. And then looking back the other direction, again, you can see permeable paving, some decomposed granite, um, some picnic tables and benches. Moving down into the, um, uh, southwest corner, so this is a demonstration corner area, a demonstration garden. There's also a retention area for, uh, stormwater. And then there will be picnic benches and some exercise equipment here. Here's a quick, um, uh, rendering of what it might look like. So, native plants here, um, you could see a picnic table. In a rain event, we might see some water gathering in the detention area. Moving over to the southeast, so we're gonna have an enhanced entry area, um, as you arrive and, uh, at the park. There's an existing exercise area. That area will have a new shade covering over it. And then the existing structures, uh, where there's a, a pavilion, um, and other exercise equipment, those will, and the bathrooms there, those will, of course, remain. And then you can see this DG path that's gonna circulate behind the bathroom and around the backside of the playground there. So, again, another kind of quick view, um, as you arrive from the south, you'll see, um, a really nice sort of entry plaza that marks the entry to the park. And, um, we'll have some enhanced signage for the park. And then moving up to the northeast, um, so in this area, we're gonna have a couple of pickleball courts. We'll have some terrace seating with picnic tables, um, and places to sit. Let's get our picture back. Fingers crossed. Okay, there we go. So, um, we do recognize that there's, uh, some concern around sound with the pickleball courts. And so, we just wanna acknowledge that one of the things we're doing is pushing the pickleball courts downward. And there's gonna be a retaining wall on two sides that will help mitigate some of the sound. And then also, we will have fencing on top of that with acoustical paneling. And we're gonna continue to work with our acoustical engineers to make sure we can mitigate that sound as much as possible for the neighbors. And a quick view, um, looking towards the pickleball courts, you can see some terrace seedings with, with, uh, permeable pavers. So, places to sit and gather for families under the trees. And then again, just sort of a quick overview, looking towards the south from, um, Ventura Street, um, a lot of enhancements around the edges, leaving the Central Park area open for soccer, for games, for frisbee, whatever that, that might be of interest during the weekend, through, throughout the week. And then again, as we mentioned, there'll be some future, uh, stormwater work there at a later date. But maybe I'll show you the last slide here, right after this, to talk a little bit about what might happen when. So, um, the red dots are really the phase one, so some new exercise equipment we anticipate coming in before the end of the year, along with shade over the existing, uh, exercise equipment in the southeast corner. Um, and then, uh, a ramp, uh, to connect the two different areas of the playground. Those we anticipate seeing, uh, happen for the end of the year. Um, and then the larger changes that are in blue that we talked about a little earlier, those will begin to really show up in 2025 and into the beginning of 2026. And so, that's really kind of my update. I know that, um, uh, Pat Gomez is here and can answer any questions because, um, there is a civic arts component to this project as well.
Hello, everybody, I'm happy to be here. My name is Pat Gomez. I'm a senior project manager for the Civic Art Department of the Department of Arts and Culture. And I'll be overseeing the civic art component of this project. Coincidentally, I was a resident of Altadena for many years. And I'm living currently a couple blocks in, in Pasadena, which I understand is considered Altadena adjacent. Anyway, uh, I'm very excited. I'm very excited about this project. You know, this is the only park that we're aware of in the United States that's named for an artist. It is a very special place. And I'm just gonna very quickly tell you a little bit about where we are. We're in the middle of procurement, so there's some things I can tell you, other things will become evident later. In April, we issued a request for qualifications from artists. That call was for an artwork, um, an artist to create an artwork that's freestanding. Because as you probably have noticed, there aren't any buildings there that are gonna be permanently in one place that can, uh, hold an artwork. So, the call went out in April for a art, for artists to submit their qualifications. We received a very robust, um, response to that. The first step in the process is for a review of qualifications. And as I mentioned, that's what that is. So, we have a selection panel that has been assembled. That panel consists of community members, experienced public artists who are local to the area, uh, Parks Department representatives, representatives, the arts deputy from the supervisor's office, uh, and I believe that's, that's the general makeup. They reviewed those qualifications, looking to see two things primarily. One, to see that the artist has experience in the type of artwork that would, uh, the type of, uh, work that would, um, result in a freestanding work. You know, that is a specific type of art-making. They're gonna look at the quality of their work and their experience. The other thing that they looked at was to see that their previous work shows that they can create work that would be appropriate for this site. Uh, I would like to go over some themes that we were looking for in relation to the work, their general broad themes. There's three of them. And so, I'm gonna just go ahead and read those to you. Uh, the first one is history. The artwork should reflect the importance and legacy of artist Charles White. The second one is inclusivity. The artwork will... The artwork will positively contribute to the values of inclusivity, family, and community connectedness. Once an artist is selected, as part of their final development of their concept, they do have community engagement requirements. And we're very excited about it. There was very, very good work that's being in the mix right now. The other thing I want to tell you about that's special to this project and on a separate track is we're working with the artist's son, Ian White, who is also a very well-regarded artist. Ian has a separate project where he is creating some concepts for art elements to go into the park that will reflect on the very important legacy of, of course, his father, Charles White. And so at a later date, once that is more developed, Ian can come and present that to you. So that's the update. That's where we are with the art.
We're so thankful to have you here. And thank you, Alan, as well. Are there any, I'm sure there are some questions from council, so don't go too far. I'm not sure who they're for. Go ahead, Councilmember Carmody.
Yeah, first of all, very excited about the renovations to the park. I lived in a block, so that's great. I'm curious about the water retention part. Is that, that's really cool. Is that like a trend that's happening with park renovations? Or is that sort of unique to that park? Or how did that come about?
It is a trend that's been emerging. This is definitely a trend that's been emerging, I'd say, across Southern California for a long time. And we're seeing it a lot more in public spaces. You know, I think we're all becoming extremely aware of the scarcity of water. We got to hear a great story about seeing it at a macro scale. So this is at a little different scale on the park. But you know, I think that in our work, as well as at the county, anytime there's an opportunity to collect water, to get that back into the ground, and also to demonstrate it to the community, we really like to see that happen in parks.
Go ahead, Connor.
Just a follow-on question to that. So how future is the Future Public Works Stormwater Project?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
How future is the Future Public Works Stormwater Project?
I'm going to defer to these guys. 2027. 2027.
Cool, okay, thank you.
What are the boundaries of your work? In other words, more specifically, do they include the sidewalks and the curbs?
Right. So this work does not propose to change any of the curb work at this time. But as I think I was trying to describe, there are existing walkways. And there are no formal sidewalks. There are sort of pathways. And so we're going to enhance many of those and extend and create a lot more sort of pathways for the park.
And secondly, I see a lot of what looks like new vegetation. Do you have any numbers on how many trees, how many bush? Do you have any numbers on the additions?
I don't think we have a full tree count yet. That's still sort of in development. But the intent, as we are with all of our projects, is to create as much shade as we can. We recognize that that's really essential with all of the climate impacts. And we're looking to utilize as many sort of native plants as we can. We also are balancing maintenance need.
Councilmember Wall.
Thank you for great design work. So anyway, we had done a lot of community-type activation events at Charles White Park, especially during COVID time and as it's getting hotter. But in seeing how people behaved in the park, I'm not quite sure how much community engagement with the actual park users. So there is one tree there that actually has an attachment to a young person named Bayla. And that tree, I don't know if it's a magnolia, but it's the southern central section. And it flowers pink at that time. So stories like that, people who actually, you know.
Charles White Park is definitely, it is very special for so many reasons. And it has that potential. And then a lot of our elders, because of access and the sloping of the park, really had a hard time enjoying that park because of the grass. And so they would sit at the top and put a chair up on the sidewalk, under the mature trees at the top center. So information like that. And then yoga or places to find shade are very important. So that southwest kind of corner where there isn't any real access, you can kind of step up on the southwest corner. But that's an area where a lot of people stretch out. So I don't know if you're taking that into account too.
Yes, right. So thank you so much for that. You know, we're always really interested to understand what the use patterns are within the park as we think about opportunities for future change. You know, that's definitely part of the reason that we didn't want to make any changes in the middle of the park, because it allowed the greatest amount of flexibility. You know, whether you want to come and put a picnic table there, you want to, you know, blanket out, you want to kick a football, kick a soccer ball, throw the frisbee. And then also, we know that rather than try and create a very pinched pathway for people to come into the park, we know that people will park and just come across. So we made sure that those areas remained open. And you know, many of the other areas that we're really developing, I think are going to be very flexible for people to use, whether it's yoga, whether it's coming to talk with friends. So we definitely were taking those into consideration.
Any other questions? Yes, we do. Go ahead, Councilmember Vega, and then Councilmember Hall.
I saw in the presentation, there were picnic tables kind of throughout the park. There are a set of picnic tables though that has shade and covering over them. That's my first question. And wanted to find out about drinking faucets throughout the park.
Right. So we worked really hard to make sure that those picnic tables are going to be within shade. You know, we're going to put in some new trees, so some of the younger ones, you know, in the early year may not have the shade that we want, but we're taking the long view. So that's the intent, is that those will be very shaded places. And then the water fountain question? Yes, we were going to have drinking fountains throughout.
Is that the question? Trying to make sure.
Oh.
Making exercises, right? So try to go with a lot of plastic that people are bringing in.
Bottle fillers and stuff. Right.
We added two, one by the pickle court, one by the.
So it sounds like at the moment, we're planning for two more. So one by the pickle court and then one by the, what did you say, the other one?
The walking.
Near the walking.
And that joins the two that are already there, right? So it'll be four. Okay, Councilmember Hall.
Yes, I'm wondering, is there going to be any type of surveillance, surveillance cameras that are placed around the park?
I don't think that's been part of the discussion yet, but.
We have that in development with renovations.
Okay. So again, you know, this is not a final plan, but we will take that into consideration. And there's some discussion at the park level.
Okay. Because I know that currently, we do have a lot of people that do come in and they play soccer. And you're leaving the field area open, which is great. But we do have teams that come in and play soccer. And we do have a lot of people. And so we just kind of wanted to know how we can, you know, kind of keep a better watch on things that do happen, since we don't always have enough patrol around. And we do have some people that do come in for the games, spectators and players that do sometimes drink. And if there's going to be signage for, you know, no alcohol and just things like that for our safety.
Right. I know that there shouldn't be park rules posted. The surveillance question hasn't really been brought fully into the design question yet, so, but we appreciate you bringing that up. We'll make a note.
Okay, thank you.
One question that I have, and this might be more directed toward parks. Is the pickleball courts going to be enclosed in the sense that they won't be accessible 24 hours a day? Yes, they will be. Okay. So, and then are they lit? Yes. Okay. So you'll have to, I would imagine, much like Farnsworth Park or Lowmountle Park, people will reserve them. And there'll be hours that you can play, but then those hours will cut off so that residents are not listening to pickleball the whole time, even with your sound mitigation efforts. Okay, that's great. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I guess just going off of Councilmember Hall, I know there's been concern, and it's not my census tract, but I will chime in, that I guess my main question, is there any coordination, and I'm assuming not, with law enforcement and that type of surveillance, as well as my earlier question? Because I look at Farnsworth and there's some wonderful improvements, but there's streets around it that kind of ruin the look. So my question to you is, is that something this council should take on in figuring out that coordination? Or is there something already in effect?
Alan, are you okay if we defer to Captain Williams? Captain Williams, we talked about this. Would you mind coming forward and talking a little bit about just Parks Bureau and their patrol of the parks and how that works with the sheriff station?
You have to excuse me, repeat the question.
We were talking about safety at the park. And can you just go into a little bit about Parks Bureau and their patrol of the park, how they respond, and how Sheriff Station responds to calls for service at our parks?
Yeah, so the unincorporated area parks are patrolled by Parks Bureau. That's separate from Altadena Sheriff Station. If there's a call for service that's considered non-emergent, not an emergency at the time, if it comes to our Sheriff Station, we defer it to, or refer it to Parks Bureau. Parks Bureau has allotted time to make it to the park. It's usually within an hour. And then they'll handle the situation, whatever it may be. If it's an emergency and we get the call, incident at the park, Altadena Sheriff Station will respond until it's deemed safe. Parks Bureau will still respond to take over the investigation, if that answers the question.
So I think Councilmember Aronson, the issue is really one of Parks Bureau patrol versus Sheriff Station patrol and making sure that that effort is coordinated. I would imagine that as the patronage of the park goes up, that's something that Parks is going to have to address.
Parks Bureau.
Parks Bureau.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
As far as safety, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah. Yeah. If there's any instances with spectators that are inebriated in public or whatever's going on.
And then I heard a question about surveillance. If surveillance were to be put up there, it wouldn't be monitored necessarily by Altadena Station. It'd most likely be monitored by Parks Bureau.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions? So this has been a much anticipated improvement to this beloved park. It is one of the parks that's sort of gotten short shrift in terms of its development and its care. I know that our former chair, Veronica Jones, is here and probably the most excited to hear this come to the fore. So we appreciate you coming out. We will look forward to perhaps another presentation as we get closer. I'm glad to know that there'll be some improvement between now and the end of the year as it relates to the exercise equipment and some of the, you know, the shade that goes over the existing equipment that's there. And I definitely want to make note of the fact that there are Measure W funds that are going into paying for this. And the supervisor, along with Congresswoman Chu, have been backing the improvements here. And it's really, I think, as Pat was saying, Pat Gomez, this idea that we have a park that's named for an artist in a town that has artists, in a town that has schools that are dedicated to the arts, I think is really important. And so we are very much looking forward to the grand reopening when that happens, possibly in 2026. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, we are moving as quickly as possible into our community reports. Library Director Nikki Winslow. Nikki, did you want to do the, okay, you'll do it at the end.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I'll try to be fast. I always try, but you know. Good evening, councilmembers, community members. Good to see everyone. Happy July. Although I know it seems way off, I don't present again in August, so I just want to remind everyone, the library is closed on Monday, September 2nd for Labor Day. And of course, a reminder that our Bob Lucas Memorial Library is closed currently for renovation. In terms of employment, we're also in the middle of a recruitment right now for a vacant library assistant position for our Youth and Family Services Department. Please spread the word on this opportunity to join the wonderful Altadena Library team. So we had to reschedule our regular Board of Trustees meeting that would normally have taken place this coming Monday. We're still finding a new date for that, anticipate it to take place the week of July 29th. If you're really excited about our board meetings, please check the website and we'll post the agenda and package probably late next week. In terms of our building projects update, our Bob Lucas Library, as I mentioned, is in the middle of renovations and is moving along nicely. We continue to work on the main library construction documents and all the permitting and other things that we need to work with LA County on. So we're in the process of that. Also in conversations with Pat, who lives in that census tract to hopefully keep things moving along in a timely way. Anticipated open date for Bob Lucas is May of next year. So our, and of course, we have our Next Chapter website on the webpage, so if you have questions, we keep that updated with everything that's happening. With our support groups, One Back, sorry. Quick reminder to save the date for our Altadena Library Foundation's annual fundraiser and super fun event Taste of Dina. I don't know where that slide went. That's weird. So there's not a slide, but put it on your calendars for Saturday, September 28th at 6:00 PM. If you visit the Foundation's website, you have opportunities to be a sponsor right now. And tickets will go on sale for the event August 1st. So please go online and support our foundation. Just a quick reminder, our next Friends Book Sale will take place on Saturday, October 5th. We're excited to kick off our 2024-25 scheduled events for our two newly appointed poets laureate, Lester Graves Lennon and Sabah Sowar. Their launch event will take place on Wednesday, August 21st, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Main Library. We also have an amazing art exhibition right now. Seems very timely. It's the Students of Tutor/Art, which was a youth program established following the Watts Rebellion. I don't know what happened to my slides tonight. Okay. But anyway, it's the Legacy of Charles White exhibition. So if you head over to the Main Library now in our community room, it's a beautiful display of the work that came out. So please sign up and join the fun. I know I've used up a lot of my time, so I'll try to be quick. We have so many programs going on all the time. Tomorrow morning, we're going to actually have an aquarium on wheels in the parking lot at the Main Library at 10:00 AM. And then we're also, this coming Saturday, the 20th, going to be having our first ever book discussion around a one-book-one-county program. So we partnered with LA County as well as many other library systems across LA County. The book is called LA Weather. I have it at the Main Library. I'm actually listening to it right now on Cloud Library, our ebook platform. So I'd encourage you to check that out. On Saturday, July 27th, at 2 o'clock, we're having an author talk with Daniel Lewis about his book, Twelve Trees: How Humans Can Embrace the Living World and Its Tree Neighbors. And then following that on Monday, July 29th, in the evening at 6:00, come learn about direct animation with Echo Park Film Center. On Tuesday, August 6th, at 6:30, or Friday, August 30th, at 2:00 PM, join Kumie Corsa for a furushiki hands-on demonstration of sustainable gift wrapping with cloth. It's like every other slide's missing tonight. I don't know why. We're also hosting a blood drive in partnership with Huntington Health on Friday, August 9th, and Saturday, August 10th, at the Main Library. Again, encouraged to make appointments for that. And my final slide, to wrap up summer reading, we'll be hosting a stuffed animal tea party for our little ones to bring their favorite stuffed animal on Thursday, August 15th, at 4:00 PM. And then we'll have our end-of-summer reading party and showing of Toy Story out in the parking lot on a big screen on Friday, August 16th, at 7:00 PM. And lastly, please join us on Saturday, August 24th, at 11:00 AM for Savoring Roots: A Journey Through Plant-Based Indigenous Culinary Traditions with Dr. Claudia Sorato. So sorry I ran over, as usual, and I only had half my slide show up for some reason. There's, as you can see, always a lot going on at your Altadena libraries. And happy to answer any questions anybody has. Okay. So on to the next part of my presentation. Like to invite Don Smith to join me, who is here representing Altadena Historical Society, I believe. Yes. So first of all, look at our beautiful quilt, everybody. Just to provide a little bit of context to why we're presenting together tonight, the Altadena Library District and the Altadena Town Council partnered with our Artist in Residence, Linda Illuminati, last summer to create the beautiful Altadena Community Quilt using botanically dyed fabrics through eight-week workshops. And what we did was identify the different census tracts in the community and had people by census tract come together and create the panels that you see on the quilt. Tonight, I have the great pleasure of recognizing a few of the people on behalf of both the Altadena Library District and the Altadena Historical Society that were behind the scenes helping us get this project completed. First, I'd like to thank Barry Penn. Come on up. For his inspired hanging system. So if you take a look, the hanging system that you see, they designed to display not only the quilt here, but also at the Main Library when it first went up. It's so complimentary to the beautiful quilt. We're so grateful for your time, hard work, and dedication to this project, which will keep it safely displayed into the future. Again, help me thank Barry. We have a little gift for you that I'll give to you. We'd also like to recognize and show appreciation to our consistent attendee, cheerleader, and community advocate, Deb Halberstadt, for her dedication to capturing images throughout the eight-week workshops and reception. Deb is at everything, right? I go to and more and is making sure that there will be photographic history captured. Thank you so much, Deb. I would also like to thank the Altadena Town Council for your partnership through the project, the Altadena Historical Society for their support and partnership, as well as Illuminati, who's not here but oversaw all of this work, quilters and behind-the-scenes workers, Hester Bell and Veronica Jones, who's in the back. For all of their work to put this beautiful quilt together. So what an amazing community-building effort. Thank you, everybody.
Does anybody have any questions for Nikki before she goes too far away? No? Okay. And then Nick has something for Barry as well. Thank you so much. Okay. Next, we have Chamber of Commerce, Judy Matthews.
Good evening, Council and the community. I draw your attention to Chamber of Commerce events as there is interest in our businesses and the entire community. Lunch and Learn webinars, virtual monthly meetings the third Thursday of the month. The series will cover a range of topics addressing current and anticipated challenges and opportunities in the business world, and I'm sure you would tell this each month because this is being presented for the entire year and then we start the next series. This is extremely exciting. Thursday, July 18th, at 12:00 noon, the speaker is Rob Clinton. He's the President of Board of Directors of Innovated Pasadena. And the topic of discussion is technology and digital transformation. On Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, 10:00 AM, Altadena Chamber's Virtual Open Sessions Board Meeting Legislative and Government Affairs 2024 Speaker Series introduces Congresswoman Judy Chu, who will present her community address. For more information on these virtual events and others, please visit the Chamber website at altedinachamber.art, to RSVP, because they do require RSVP. Please join the open session board meetings to keep you informed and engaged. I would like to take this opportunity to extend a thank you to Captain Williams and his staff for a very informative watch meeting this past week. Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Please join us for the session, for the open session. Take time to look, there's a lot of information there for you and you really should be involved if you can. Look forward to the Chamber launching its hybrid meeting soon, so we're excited about that. And last, good evening and enjoy your summer.
Judy, hang on just one second. I think there's a question for you from Councilmember Arndzen.
Just a clarification, anybody can attend these events, correct? Whether they're a member or not?
The open session is open to the public.
Thank you, Judy.
So we made sure that on our calendar, the board has its closed session, and we allow the open session for the community.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Judy. Eaton Canyon Nature Center, Kenya? Are we... Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kenya Staya, and I am the Recreation Services Supervisor at Eaton Canyon Natural Area. So we can go on to the next slide. Just a couple reminders, I was here not too long ago, but just want to remind everyone that our park gate opens at 8:00 AM and closes at 7:30. And that will change on November 1st, when we change to our fall and winter hours. And then our nature center opens at 10:30 and closes at 7:00 PM, except on Saturdays because we have morning programs. And we can go on to the next page. So every Saturday morning, we have our family nature walk that's open and free for everybody. It starts at 9:00 AM, just no dogs are allowed, unfortunately. And then we also have on our patio, we have 10:30 Storytime, and then we have Nature Center Discovery Time from 10 to 12. I do encourage everyone to come out. They're free programs and it's open, like, I will tell you this, I saw two people, grown adults, participating in Storytime. So come on out, like, it's for everyone. And then we have the monthly walk. So we have the bird walk for Saturday of the month, and then we have our plant walk third Sunday of the month, which is this Sunday coming up. That one is led by the California Native Plant Society, and the bird walks, we partner with Pasadena Audubon. Next slide. This is just a recap of our June events. We had lots of activities going on in June. So we had our Bark Ranger Program. So every Saturday of June, we were out at the Trailhead encouraging hikers that had dogs to take the pledge, which is, you know, bag your own poop, always leash up your pet, respect wildlife, and know where you can go. And we got a lot of participants, as you can see, and those are just a couple photos. Pasadena Humane was out there with us as well, and they were giving hikers information about their responsibility they have to their dog while they're out there, all the heat and make sure to bring water. We also had Starbucks out there, and they gave out pup cups. So it was really cute. And that will probably happen next year as well, so if you have a dog and you're out hiking in June, come visit us. And then we had our biggest event of the year, which was our Day in Nature. And that's just a big open house of our park. We had a lot of educational exhibitors, all of the environmental groups. We also had, this year, our theme was, "Where Art and Nature Unite." We transformed our auditorium into a gallery, which displayed Jose Ramirez's art. And we also had Pasadena Society of Artists come out with a couple of their artists. So it was a great event. We have lots of people come out. It was just lots of fun. Next page. And then we had our first-ever Pride Outside event this year. It was a Thursday evening, and we had plant walks, nature journaling, educational exhibitors. LA County Trails was out there. This organization called The Great Outdoors was there. We just had just a fun time. It was great. Everybody loved the painting activity in the patio. It was very meditative. A lot of people made new friends. It was just a great day for us. All right, next one. And then just quickly, some of the upcoming events. July 26th, we have our Moth Day event, so we'll be having guided hikes, Arthur Pod Table, crafts activities, and some pretty cool stuff going on. And then skipping all the way down to November 2nd, it's going to be our first Dia de los Muertos event, which is something new at Eaton Canyon. We're actually going to have Ofelia Esparsa participate. We're partnering up with her. If you don't know who Ofelia is, she's an artist that has showcased her art national and internationally. She's a very well-known artist. She does a lot of the ofrendas at Grand Park and just all these different... I believe she also did the ofrenda when Coco was at the Hollywood Bowl. So she's going to be making an ofrenda in our auditorium, and so we're really lucky to have her and be part of this event. So if you're available November 2nd, come down to Eaton Canyon. It's just going to be fun. And then last, that's not, it's not up there, but I just wanted to let you guys know that myself and the natural areas biologist, we partnered up with the Eaton Canyon Nature Center Associates to apply for the Animal Welfare Grant. And ECNCA was awarded $10,000. And with that $10,000, we plan to implement at Eaton Canyon. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Are there any questions from Council?
One quick one. Do you... I've noticed increased flow up there. Are you guys getting increased resources to deal with all the people that are coming up here now?
We recently had, we have this program called Youth at Work, and we got a couple of youth workers through that program. And they were really helpful the last two months with traffic flow and helping with the parking area. Because, as you know, every Saturday morning, we have activities for the public, and so me, myself, and the regular staff are handling that. And so, yes, we do need some support with the parking, but we're glad that we were able to get some youth workers from that Youth at Work. And then we have a couple park aides. Of course, they're part-time staff, so it's as needed or hours, that kind of thing. But we're always looking for volunteers. We have quite a bit of volunteers at Eaton Canyon, but if anyone's ever interested in helping with parking, I think for our big event, our Day in Nature, we had Troop One. They helped us with the parking. So any community members or volunteers are always welcome.
Any other questions?
It's so lovely to have you here. We love having you come and let us know what's going on at Eaton Canyon. It's such a treasured place for so many Altadinos and so many people that come from afar due to social media's impact on the interest of the park. I did have a question. I think I posed this possibly to Supervisor Bargersfield Deputy, but the Pine Crest Gate is under the actual gate itself as it relates to the signage that's on the gate. Do you know whose responsibility the signage is?
So like, is it like hard signage, like...
Yeah, it's affixed to the gate itself.
Okay. That might be LA County Trails, but I can look into that and get back to you guys because I know Altadena Crest Trails there, and we've been working with them to... They help us with the trash, LA County Trails in that area. So it might be them. I know sometimes, once in a while, we'll put like a paper sign for any like immediate stuff happening, but we didn't put up the sign, so it might be LA County Trails who did that.
We're trying to figure out how to improve the signage there because people are now... It is in my census tract, mine and Connor's. In fact, we've had a number, a big increase in vehicle theft because it's such a popular way to access the park. And so the signage, there's no signage that tells you to pack it in, pack it out, which I think would be really helpful. And then it's very unclear about the restroom situation. So if people are entering the park from the Pine Crest Gate, they completely bypass the nature center and all of the bathrooms there. And what ends up happening is, it says that there are bathroom facilities, but the bathroom facilities that it's probably referring to are like at Henninger Flats. And people don't understand like a two-and-a-half-mile hike to go to the bathroom. So I think we need to like at least let people know. And are there new bathrooms that are open at the end of the, or bathrooms that are open at the end of the parking lot?
I believe that's in the works.
That's in the works.
Yeah, there's porta-potties at the Trailhead at the end of the parking lot, and they're set to build a set of bathrooms right there, lockable restrooms over there. It'll be like unisex, like bathrooms, and there'll be, I think it's going to be four of them, so four stalls, individuals like that.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, so maybe we, maybe I cord connect with you and we see what we can do, just to improve it so people really understand if they're going to go in that way, what it means.
Okay. I know we were doing a signage project, and that kind of went out towards the Pine Crest area. So I know, I think they might be redoing that kiosk that's right by the Altadena Crest, you know, where it starts. And I think the Henninger Flats one, there used to be a sign there with a map if you go up. I think that one's also, maybe get an update, because we just got new signs on our side of the park, and I believe the kiosks are coming later with all the maps saying which is what. So I can...
So there's wayfinding.
Exactly, yeah. But I can, I'll look into it more, and then we can connect, of course.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for being here.
Thanks for having me, guys. Bye.
Okay, and now we have Altadena Historical Society. Dawn?
Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited. It's the first time I've ever been to a town council meeting. And also, just excited because there's so many really wonderful things happening at the Historical Society. We just got some new board members, myself included. So I'm going to share a little bit with you, some of the activities that'll be done for community engagement, and then some things we have on board for coming up for late summer/fall. So first is, in partnership with the Altadena Library District, we held two events, including the Mid-Century Modern Architectural History Talk and the Millionaires Row Historical Tour. Our walking history tours are always very popular and fill up quickly, so if you're interested in finding out more about those and signing up for them, please check our website and do that quickly. We aim to offer more on the topics of architecture, notable landmarks, cultural heritage, sustainability, true crime, and many more themes. Then next, in partnership with the Altadena Guild of the Huntington Memorial Hospital, we celebrated the history of Meadow Brick Road. This annual community outreach event allowed us to connect with the community and highlight our resources and our research services. This summer, in partnership with the LA County Aging and Disability Department, we held the dedication ceremony in memory of Astrid Ellersek. The Altadena Community Center now offers a bench and plaque, which you'll see when you go out, which recognizes the life and work of this beloved Altadena resident. Many members of the Altadena Historical Society, Altadena Heritage, and the NAACP were in attendance, along with Astrid's son, Steve Hausler, and his two dogs, which is kind of cool. We then celebrated recently, Juneteenth, with our Third Annual Ellen Garrison Clark Scholarship Award Ceremony. Providing scholarships to our talented youth is the highlight of the event, and this year we gave out two scholarships. This year's luncheon included also a film screening of Ellen Garrison, Scenes from an Activist Life by Five Sisters Production, along with a live virtual tour, we were able to get our technology to work, of Ellen's birthplace by the Robbins House, which is in Massachusetts, which was pretty cool. We also had the privilege to showcase the incredible quilts made by retired Captain Vicky Stuckey. Captain Stuckey did a beautiful job telling the story of each quilt and its significance. The event was done in partnership with many community partners, of which include the Altadena Town Council, Mountain View Cemetery, Five Sisters Production, Robbins House, Altadena Rotary Club, Senator Portantino, Assembly Member Chris Holden, LA County Parks and Recreation, and Alta Arts. The use of the Davies Building at Farnsworth Park was made possible through the generous donation of Supervisor Catherine Bargert. Next, the Altadena Historical Society members Jean, Veronica, and Marlene were among the crowd of well wishers, including myself, but I was representing, sorry, the Rotary Club. Webster's Community Pharmacy owners Michael and Meredith Miller, and they cut the ribbon at the grand opening of their new location in the Chase Bank Complex on Lake Avenue. Webster's, as you know, is a significant part of Altadena's history, or 98 years this year, coming close to their 100th, and salutes their commitment to the community, and I encourage you to stop by their new location. The Altadena Historical Society members, again Veronica, Marlene, and Melissa, attended the 48-State Tour event held at Mountain View Cemetery, which they jokingly call the oldest business in Altadena. There were 45 and more people in attendance, all eager to learn about the history of Mountain View Cemetery, the gravestone preservation... the gravestone preservation process, and the scope of work as it relates to different geographical areas of the United States. There were many attendees who even drove from all over LA County, imagine that, as we were the only Southern California stop on this nationwide tour. Now, coming up in the fall, we have some exciting events. We're looking towards an interview with the Woodbury family and hoping to have them be a possible speaker in documenting their history here in Altadena. Another possible speaker is Becky Nicolaides, who wrote the book How Diversity Remade Suburban Life in Los Angeles after 1945. And of course, Altadena is featured in this book. Another exciting thing that's happening is the Altadena Historical Society is celebrating its 90th anniversary. So we're looking forward to working with you all. We love the town council. And we are in the midst of our membership drive. So if you want to sponsor or support the historical society, please go to our website. We would love to have you join us as a member. And also, for any upcoming talks, activities, and events, please check our website. Thank you.
Any questions before we let her go? Okay, it was so good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, we are going to move as quickly through our committee reports as we can. Melissa Morona, Chair of the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan.
A really exciting topic of land use and zoning changes, the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan.
Maybe I should pass out some more ice cream before we get, no, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
I wanted noted that the town council members did not get ice cream and are waiting until the end. Seriously, though, a few months ago, I was able to present on the West San Gabriel Area Valley Plan, in which there will be changes to zoning and land use in Altadena. On June 27, LA County Planning put forth a notice of completion and availability of a draft program environmental impact report on the plan. They are holding a virtual public meeting on July 18 from 6:00 to 7:30. Anybody who's interested in that should attend. And the town council also welcomes any information or comments on the plan than anyone has. Thank you.
Thank you. Film Committee, Councilmember you.
Thank you, Chair Knapp. On July 10, the Film Committee met with members of the LA County Film Office and Film LA for a presentation on the upcoming updates to the new county film ordinance. The rewrite of the ordinance was done to compile all of the filming codes under one location. It gives the LA County Film Office the authority to approve, deny, and revoke all film permits and have full enforcement authority over the subsequent provisions of the code. The updated code also includes general film permit requirements and enforcement provisions for permitted filming activity. The Film Committee will be updating the FAQs on the Altadena Town Council's website that was put together back in 2017 to address the most common questions and issues. This will serve as a comprehensive guide for Altadena residents who have questions or concerns about any filming that is occurring in their neighborhood. The new ordinance is expected to be brought to the Board of Supervisors on September 10, with expected adoption on the following Tuesday. Once adopted, the Altadena Town Council Film Committee will plan to host an informational town hall meeting where residents will get to hear from the county film office about the updates and have their questions answered.
Thank you so much. Any questions for her about filming? Just going to ask, okay. Safe Streets, Councilmember Wong.
Hi, everybody. So quickly, the Altadena Town Council Traffic Safety and Mobility Committee, also known as Safe Streets, meets on the fourth Thursday of every month at 7:00. But we've got a little curveball at you. We're going to have actually a special meeting in July, it's summer. And we're actually going to meet on July 23 at 10:00 a.m. The Traffic Safety and Mobility Committee, since 2018 its inception, has been getting support on how to do community engagement, walk audits, and a variety of tools to be able to tell the community's story about how we feel about traffic safety. So they are assisting us as a community to do just sort of like a project where we can pick a street, pick a safe route to Charles White Park, for example, and be able to tell a community story about how we access where we go. So they will then do a report for us on the work of this fun little walk audit storytelling, "street story," it's basically called. So with that said, that's going to be a Zoom meeting, and you can ask questions 7:23 at 10:00 a.m. And then our next Safe Streets meeting will be August 22. That will be the fourth Thursday of August. And then, let's see. There has been so much energy focusing on walk and bike to school day events, so planning is already going on. It was amazing to get seven to eight schools, which amounted to hundreds of our youth in Altadena, moving by different modes to access school. So if you want to get involved in that, definitely planning's going on. October will be Walk to School, National Walk to School Day. And last year, we split it up into three different days, based on school availability, et cetera. And it's a great tool for the council members to walk around with your school and be part of that amazing event. Also, California Clean Air Day happens to be in October. So that's a fun project, community engagement. We had all of our partners in making Traffic Safety Mobility move and inspire from our county level, Public Works, deputies for Supervisor Barger. We had Senator Portantino, Congresswoman Chu, and Chris Holden actually walked with the students. So it's a really empowering event. So I've gone over my time once again, but we are doing Altadena Bicycle Club through, Loma Alta Parks After Dark is doing pop-up bike parks. And Highway Patrol will be handing out helmets and supporting on the 26th of this month. And there will also be a concert going on. So your kids will be zooming around in circles, and you can dance, free helmets, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Legislative Committee?
Thank you. I'd like to bring to your attention that the Office of Cannabis Management will be putting forth a meeting to discuss proposed regulations for the commercial sale of cannabis to legally operate in Los Angeles County, which it doesn't now. That meeting will happen next week here in this building on July 23 from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. There will also be a Zoom meeting, in case you can't attend in person, on July 31 from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. And that's regarding the sale of cannabis. Last week, at the Board, LA County Board of Supervisors meeting, Supervisors Horvath and Hahn put forth a proposed charter amendment and to instruct the county council to look into that. What it would do is put forth a new government structure, governance structure, for placement on the November 5, 2024 ballot. And what will happen with that is, they hope to, by 2028, establish an Office of County Executive to be selected directly by voters countywide. So they would oversee the entire county, like a CEO is how it was described. Further, they would like to expand the Board of Supervisors from five members to nine members, following the 2030 census and reapportionment process, with seven supervisors to be elected in 2032, moving all the way to nine supervisors. That's a big change to LA County. And so if you have any interest in that, I would continue to look into the LA County Board of Supervisors meeting, and I will continue to report out on that. A lot of changes going on at the LA County Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Indeed, and thank you so much for watching the meeting. It was quite long and very well-attended. Okay, we are moving on to General Public Comment. Councilmember Aronzin.
Thank you, Chair. During General Public Comment, any person may address the Altadena Town Council. The council welcomes public participation and input. Comments are limited to no more than two minutes. The council does not respond to comment during meetings. If a response is required, please give your appropriate information on the card. And again, the comment cards are in the back of the room. Please bring them up to Reggie if you have any more, and I'll turn it over to Pat.
Is somebody going to be timing? Just wanted, just wanted to make sure. Okay. First one, whoops, okay. Got it, it's okay. Yeah, it's okay. Lisa? I was going to ask you if you were, that takes care of that very quickly. Thank you very much, and welcome. Anna Brown? Yeah.
Check, check. Hi, everyone, thank you for hearing me out. I live, my family and I live over on 592 Figaroa. It's in between Windsor and Lincoln. And that street is a beautiful wide street, but unfortunately, there are a lot of e-bikes, and like people are doing donuts. It's become like, once the sun goes down, it's all hell breaks loose. And I'm worried like, it's unsafe. I have young children, as do a lot of my neighbors. And then they're putting in the elderly home on the end there, which is looking really beautiful. But I just think that street could use some speed bumps. So that is my request.
Let me ask you. In order for us to contact you, we need to know where to reach you?
Yeah, sure.
If you would give your information to Reggie, then he'll take, he'll give it to me.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie Nguyen?
Pat, do you want to call up the next person behind Ronnie so that they're waiting? Oh, she's there.
She's right there, okay.
Next up, Ann, after we're in.
Good evening, council. Mine's at Charles White Park, which you're developing. Definitely, we don't want no lights. We have enough problems up there during the day. I've been off work for 13 months on a work-related injury. I see a lot more than what you guys see. I've been on Mountain View Street since '66, before the park was built. And I'm here again, one more time about the lights. You post had lights underneath the picnic area that pop up, but they don't come on. You don't maintain the park. Here it is 44 years, and you guys just now praising Charles White? To me, that's kind of ridiculous. You guys act like this is a big thing, we doing this with Charles White, but it took 44 years for you to do this? Then you're coming up with all the development on the northeast end and northwest end. There's people with homes there. And the noise, on that west end, there's three backyards, with the fourth one sitting down on the south side. When will the people have time for their own peace and quiet? On Sundays, the park is just full of people. But you guys talking about the park development, but you guys said one thing about parking. Parking is ridiculous. But you guys don't care because you don't live there. You don't see what we see. So she gave me the sign, I'm cool, but I have more to say later on.
Mr. Nguyen, would you like to have a council member contact you?
Of course.
Then we need to get your, you got it? Okay. Ann Hickam Bottom?
Thank you very much. Good evening, remaining community members and council members. Ann Hickam Bottom with Assembly Member Chris Holmes' office. So I will talk slowly so I can use my two minutes. I just, I just want to make sure that everyone knows about his 25th Annual Community Resource Fair and Block Party, Saturday, August 3, 500 block of East Jackson. As many of you know have been there, and that's in front of his house. This will be his final block party for the time being, until his next iteration. So I hope to see you there. Thank you very much. I did put some flyers in the back table.
And Ann, did we get a copy of the flyer in digital form? Or can we?
Yes.
Dot has it, okay, great. And I did want to tell you that I saw you come in earlier, and I was going to recognize you, and then I couldn't find you, and I thought, oh, she must have left. And now here you are. So apologies. No worries. Okay, thanks so much for being here, we always appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, that wraps it up for general, for public comment?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Census Track reports. We have 4601, Councilmember Chapola.
Thank you, Chair Knapp. I have two items I want to address tonight. First, regarding the stolen plaque commemorating the Mount Lo Railway. I'm pleased to report that our Chair, Victoria Knapp, is currently exploring options with Supervisor Barger's office for a more permanent replacement. And we look forward to presenting those options to residents soon. Second, most of you have likely heard, perhaps from KTLA's reporting on the issue, about a regrettable incident between two neighbors in CT 4601 last week. Our community has had a fraught relationship with street vending in recent years, an issue that's come before this committee on multiple occasions, came up tonight. I imagine that convictions about this issue are what motivated a resident to confront the operators of a startup coffee cart operating on the street outside their own home. Now, it appears that the operators, who are residents, made good faith efforts to obtain the necessary permits and were attempting a soft opening of their mobile cart concept. No matter the motivations or intention of the resident who confronted the cart owners, the words spoken and the impression they left can't go unaddressed. Even after an attempted apology, the vendors and their family members were left with the sting of racial prejudice and the sense that they were unwelcome in their own neighborhood. As representatives of a community that prides itself on its diversity and reflects as much around this table, we repudiate the wickedness of racial prejudice and systemic racism in every form. These things are unwelcome in Altadena. And each of us has a duty to oppose them in our hearts, our minds, and in our community. Although it'll never make headlines, I sincerely hope that this incident becomes the impetus for us to better love our neighbors as ourselves. And if a resident has concerns about a street vendor, I would encourage them, instead of confronting, to call the LA County Office of Small Business at 844-432-4900, or email OSB@opportunity.lacounty.gov. Please include your details about the problem, the exact location of the sales, and the day and times of operations. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Connor, and thanks so much for addressing that. 460301.
Thank you, Chair. So just a couple of quick things. We were talking about water today, and we had some really, a really fun time before COVID to actually take a tour of the Lincoln Avenue Water Facility. So they actually meet once a month. And so this Friday is the Lincoln Avenue Water Company Board of Directors. Lincoln Avenue Water is our largest server, not just for our census tract, 460301, but others. So we want to try and organize a tour of their facility. It's a great community-building event. And then SCE, just giving a note to residents who live in the Cheney Trail area, there was going to be some pole replacement work being done. And so SCE, due to heat and other concerns of the community, have put the work on pause. And they would like to have, so we will be organizing a meeting for the residents that live in the affected circuits in the Cheney Trail area, when that meeting will be. And we'll meet the new SCE that took over for Albert, who will be also leading part of that discussion. Thank you. To be determined when that date is.
Great. Okay, I think that that concludes our agenda. I do want to let everyone know that our next meeting will be August 20. Am I right about that? I am right about that. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All right. I just wanted to let the community members that are still here know that we have a lot of ice cream. And I'm, I cannot be taking my ice cream home. So I'm bringing the ice cream out, and council members, please take it. Take some to your spouses, whatever you would like to do. Thank you so much. Thanks, I can understand.
Counsel, you can leave the chairs out, but we need to pack up the tables, please.